We are recording.
All right. Good evening. I would like to call the March 9, 2021, meeting of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to order. I will start with the call to order and do the roll call. Myra, do you want me to do it, or you can do it? I'm fine, either way.
I can do it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Beloga.
Here.
Commissioner Hukim.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson. Let the record note that Commissioner Thorson is not here yet.
All right. Our second order of business this evening would be the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Commissioner Hukim moves to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Olson.
All right. Um, moved by Commissioner Hukim, second by Commissioner Olson. Um, can I have a vote agenda? Um, I can, I can do this if you like.
Cheryl, I would like to note that there is an addition to the agenda. Sorry, I was trying to jump in there.
All right, sorry.
Um, if you notice on my agenda here, it's not on the peak agenda, commissioners, that we've added an item under discussion items. It was just added late today. And it is the annual housing report. It is informational. There's no action. But it is going to be information for all the commissioners. So with that addition, can we have approval of the agenda with the addition?
Commissioner Hukim, is that acceptable?
Yes, it is. I move to approve the agenda with the additional item.
All right. Commissioner Olson, are you still second, seconding that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, I will call the roll. Commissioner Hukim.
Hi.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Beloga.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis, I. Commissioner Thorson has not joined our meeting yet, so. So it passes. Now, approval. Sorry, guys, I'm looking at two different screens. Now looking at approval of the minutes. First, we will look at approving the minutes of February 9, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Commissioners and Vice Chair Lewis.
Yes.
When we called for the vote for the February 9, 2021, HRA meetings, Commissioner Beloga made the motion. However, I went back and determined that he wasn't actually at the meeting. And my bad, I didn't catch that. But I think for record purposes, we probably should have somebody that was at the meeting approve the minutes. And so, and also that he would abstain from voting on them. So we just kind of wanted to clean that up.
Oh, so that's why that is there again. So you would, can I, so it's really basically people have already approved that, but now we'd need to reapprove it and have a new commissioner approve those minutes. So do I hear a motion to approve the February 9, 2021 minutes?
Chair Lewis, Commissioner Olson moves that we approve the minutes for March, or February 9.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Hukim seconds.
Thank you. So Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Olson, second by Commissioner Hukim. I will call the roll to approve the February 9 minutes. Professor, professor, excuse me, guys, I just moved you up. Commissioner Hukim. Commissioner Hukim.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis, I. Commissioner Christensen is not here.
Thorson.
Thorson, thank you.
Just joined.
Oh, good.
Madam Chair.
That's okay. Sorry.
Oh, I would like to abstain from the vote.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Beloga. I'm sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity to do that. Sorry. All right. Okay, do you want me to just turn it over to Commissioner Thorson? Sorry. Um, working on.
Chair Lewis, you can finish this motion and we can.
All right, I'll just finish it.
I'm not sure if he's, he heard the motion, but he can vote on it if he chooses, if he so chooses. So chooses.
What was the motion?
Um, to approve the February 9 minutes, we had to, we had to actually do a reapproval because Commissioner Beloga had originally moved to approve the minutes, but he was not at the meeting, at that particular meeting. So we did a reapproval.
I am prepared to vote.
All right, could I have your vote, please? Commissioner Thorson.
I.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to the minutes of February 23, 2021. Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 23?
Will move by Thorson.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorson. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Thorson, second by Commissioner Beloga. I will now call the roll. Commissioner Beloga.
Hi.
Commissioner Hukim.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Thorson.
Hi.
Commissioner Lewis, I. The motion passes. Commissioner Thorson, I will now turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, it sounds like we're on to item four, new business. Is there any new business? Is there any new business right under item four? If not, we will move on to item five, 5.1, organization, under organizational business. 5.1 is 2020.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Thorson, this is Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. I could not get my camera and mute off.
Problem, I understand.
So I do want to offer some new business. We have, want to thank you and acknowledge Sheri Schoquist. Ms. Sheri Schoquist is an HRA analyst and has done a tremendous amount of work of putting together and launching and implementing our, or, excuse me, our Opportunity Housing Ordinance, as well as the Affordable Housing Trust elements that are in the pipeline and some that have already come online as she is going to be leaving us for development opportunities. And so professional development opportunities, excuse me. And so I wanted to take this time to, one, notify the board, two, thank Ms. Schoquist and allow her to have any words or allow the commissioners to speak with Ms. Schoquist at this time.
Thank you, Administrator Coleman. Thank Chair Thorson and, and HRA commissioners. It has been an honor to serve the city of Bloomington at a very crucial and transformative time, something that I will always treasure in my professional career, being able to preserve 306 units at Village Club and stabilize that project by also building 172 new units. That is one of the biggest NOAA preservation deals in the state of Minnesota, and we did it in 60 days. Thank you to the city and the HRA. It was amazing to be a part of that. The leadership team that I've worked with in the city of Bloomington with the Community Development Director, HRA Administrator, most importantly, the Chief Financial Officer, along with legal and many others have, it's been a true pleasure to be part of that team, bringing the momentum of all these projects forward and really understanding the best tools and incentives out of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And, you know, keep in mind, your Bloomington Affordable Housing Trust Fund at 15.2 million is larger than the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the County of Hennepin. So I'm very, very pleased and proud to have been a part of this great work. And I wish you the best as a city as you move forward with this transformative and catalytic development, you know, along Lincoln Boulevard, your other strong commercial and transportation nodes. It truly has been an honor. Thank you.
Ms. Schoquist, I am very sorry to hear that you are leaving us. I believe you have done a phenomenal job and in your time here and a very difficult job, and I wish you the best on whatever you are going to in the future. Thank you very much for all of your work here.
Chair Thorson.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, want to thank Ms. Schoquist for all the hard work. It was a fast ride in a way, and you didn't need to hold on to the saddle horn. And did so, you helped us with style. Did I lose my picture?
No.
Okay, I was just seeing Myra. Anyway, wish you well in what you do. And thank you for what you have contributed to the growth of affordable housing and development in the the district for Bloomington and all of our residents. Thank you and wish you well.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chair, it's Commissioner Lewis.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes, I just want to echo the comments that have already been shared. And I have to say that you really helped us understand the ordinance. I mean, I don't, I don't think it would have been as smooth a transition or getting used to it if you had not been there. So you will be missed. And good luck on where, wherever you're going, they're lucky to get you.
Chair Thorson.
Mark, do you have your, where's Mark?
He's muted.
Mark, you're muted.
Try it again. I was trying to, I'm having issues with my camera. And so I'm trying to get up there, but I'm trying not to mess things up, so I leave again. So any other comments?
Chair Thorson.
Commissioner Hukim.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, again, echo what everybody else has said, but also just say thank you so much. You've made this transition for me very easy and smooth. And it has been a privilege and an honor to get to work with you this past just over a year. So I wish you all the best. And as Commissioner Lewis said, wherever you go, they are very lucky to have you. And the city of Bloomington will greatly miss you. So congratulations. Good luck. And you're leaving a mark here in Bloomington.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Beloga.
Thank you. Sheri, that's with real mixed emotions that I hear of your departure. Of course, all I believe are very is that you're moving on, and I suspect it's to a another and more responsible and more challenging opportunity. But from a local standpoint, I've enjoyed meeting and working with you. And this, that you have done, the results that you have contributed to the city of Bloomington will be your, so we will miss you. And I should more personalize that, I certainly will. And I hope when you land at wherever it is that you're landing, and I hope that you share that with us, that we'll find the opportunity, if it's local, to come back and engage in development with the city. So thank you so much for all that you've done.
Are there any other comments? Thank you again, everyone. Does anyone else here an echo? All right. I think that's on my end. Let me see if I can fix this.
Chair Thorson, I think you're logged in twice, which is why it's echoing.
That's what I thought, but I'm having trouble figuring out how to get rid of that second one.
I can delete it, but I don't know which one you're actually on.
All right, how's it?
It's better.
All right, perfect. My apologies. In my, in my hurry to try to get on, apparently I started a, another window. All right, on to item 5.1, 2020, HRA Budget Adjustment. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. This is, can you scroll to the next page, please, Myra? This is the same request as the one in January's budget adjustment. It's just one final comparison between budget to actual before we close out 2020 next week that our accountant did. And so there were a few line items that expenses were over budget since tax adjustment. And so this adjustment would better reflect the actual expense of 2020. Are there any questions?
Any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Olson, is that a hand up? Commissioner Olson, you're muted. Was that a hand up? Thank you. Did you have a, did you have a question or comment on this item?
No, I was actually fixing my screen on my laptop.
No problem. Anyone else have any comments or questions? If not, we are looking for motion on the HRA Budget Adjustment.
Commissioner Hukim makes the motion to approve the 2020 HRA Budget Adjustment.
Commissioner Lewis, second motion.
Motion by Hukim, second by Lewis. I will now do the roll call vote. Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
And Thorson is I, motion passes unanimously. On to item 5.3, designation of the official depositories for the HRA. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman with HRA Administrator. This item was approved in January, so this one is the designation of dates, times, and places of the HRA 2021 Commission Meetings. You called for budget adjustments.
All right. I'm sorry, I called for budget. Did I, did I not call item 5.2?
This is item 5.1, and there seems to be probably an overlap in the agenda because the agenda was republished right before. So the first is the designation of dates, times, and places of the 2021 HRA Commission Meetings.
Got it. Okay, go ahead with, is there any comment, staff comment on this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair Thorson. So this item was approved in January as an amendment to designate meeting dates, times, and places for the meetings in 2021 prior to the annual meeting, as there was a need to do so. But the existing HRA bylaws require that the HRA must designate the dates, time, and places of the HRA Commission regular meetings. And therefore, the 2021 HRA Commission Meeting Calendar is attached. And so I am seeking approval as pursuant to the current HRA bylaws of the 2021 HRA Commission Meetings designating the dates, times, and places.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, John Olson. I move that we approve the designation of dates, times, and places of the 2021 HRA Commission Meetings Calendar.
Chair Thorson, Commissioner Lewis, second.
We have a motion by Olson, second by Lewis. Now for the roll call vote. Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
And Thorson is an I, motion passes unanimously. Are we then on to what's the next item we're on? Because I apparently don't have the amended agenda in front of me. It would be designation of official depositories for the HRA. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. So as the state, as it stated in bylaws of the HRA, the HRA must designate the official depositories of the HRA at the annual meeting. The official depositories consist of US Bank and PMA 4M Fund. And you'll note that this is a part of, or has been established through our accounting services of our services contract with the city of Bloomington. And so I'm looking for two separate motions, one to approve US Bank as the official depository of the HRA, and another motion to approve PMA 4M Fund as an official depository of the HRA. And Myra is available to call a roll call if necessary.
Mr. Chair, John Olson.
Olson.
Thank you. I move to approve US Bank as an official depository of our HRA.
Commissioner Hukim seconds.
Hukim, motion by Olson, second by Hukim. I will now do the roll call vote. Beloga. Beloga, was that an I?
Sorry, yep, it is, sorry.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
And Thorson is an I, motion passes unanimously. On then to, oh, we have a second motion needed on this item.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lewis, I move to approve MPMA 4M Fund as an official depository of the HRA.
Olson, seconds.
Motion by Lewis, second by Olson, again for the roll call vote. Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
And Thorson, votes I, motion passes unanimously. Now on to designation of the investment brokers for the HRA. Do we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. So the HRA is required, as stated in our bylaws, to designate the official depositories of the HRA at the annual meeting. The official depositories include these investment brokers. Great Pacific Securities, Northland Securities, RBC Capital Markets LLC, Stifel Nicolaus &amp; Company, US Bank, and Vining Sparks IBG. I will be looking for, excuse me, FHN Financial as well as an investment broker. I will be looking for separate motions for each one. So that is a total of seven motions separately. And Myra is available to call roll call vote if necessary.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lewis, I move to approve FHN Financial as an official investment broker of the HRA.
Commissioner Hukim.
Hi.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Lewis and a second by Hukim. Myra, you are welcome to do the roll call vote on these, please. Commissioner Beloga.
I'm curious why we need seven separate motions for the same purpose. That it's a, it's a small item, but I just don't comprehend why we're doing it.
Commissioner Thorson, we can make them all one big, one motion if you choose. I mean, you can do it, you can cover all motions with one call.
Commissioner Beloga, thank you for asking that question. I was, I had the same and, and was going along here, but I appreciate you bringing it up. It sounds like it is not necessary for us to make separate motions. So I would look to the person who made the motion to perhaps amend it.
Yes. Chair Thorson, I would be happy to amend that motion. And if you'd like, I will restate it. I move to approve FHN Financial, Great Pacific Securities, Northland Securities, RBC Capital Markets LLC, Stifel Nicolaus &amp; Company, US Bank, and Vining Sparks IBG as the official investment brokers of the HRA.
Commissioner Hukim seconds.
I have a motion by Lewis, second by Hukim, and I will now do the roll call vote. Beloga.
Hi.
Hukim.
Hi.
Lewis.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
And Thorson is an I, motion passes unanimously. On to delegation of HRA Electric, Electronic Funds Transfer Designee. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Commissioner, excuse me, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. And so oh, let's just switch, okay. So in accordance with Minnesota Statute 471.38, governing electronic funds transfers, the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority must meet all of the following provisions for electronic funds transfer. One, the governing body on the annual basis will delegate, will delegate the HRA Administrator as the designee to make electronic fund transfers. Two, the dispersing banks of the Bloomington HRA will keep on file a certified copy of the delegation of authority. And three, the authorized persons initiating the electronic funds transfers are following, as approved through the staff services contract between the HRA and the city. Lori Economy Scholler, Chief Financial Officer for City of Bloomington. Juliana, I'm sorry, Juliana Vogel, Finance Manager for City of Bloomington. Amy Sevig, Assistant Finance Manager for City of Bloomington. Jan Almquist, Accountant with City of Bloomington. Mary Lee, Accountant with City of Bloomington. Judy Fridenberg, Informational Systems Analyst. She does transmitting payroll direct deposit file. And Matt Vara, Information Systems Analyst, does transmitting of payroll direct deposit file. Additionally, four, all electronic funds transfers shall be, shall have proper approvals and supporting documentation as required of the city of all city and HRA dispersments. Five, written confirmation of the transactions must be made within one business day after the transaction. And six, city council notifications of all dispersment types are governed by City Charter Section 350 to 2.52. And so we'll be looking for a motion to approve the electronic funds transfer designation for 2021. And it'll be in effect until the next HRA Annual Meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioners, any questions? If not, we are looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hukim.
Commissioner Hukim.
I would like, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the HRA Electronic Funds Transfer Designation for 2021. I would like, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the HRA electronic funds transfer designation for 2021 and until the next HRA annual meeting.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
We have a motion by Hukim, second by Lewis. I will now call the roll call vote. Baloga? Hukim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On to uh, designation of the official newspaper for the HRA. This is always an interesting one. Could we have the staff report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. The Bloomington Richfield Sun Current is currently the official newspaper of the HRA. As per the current HRA bylaws, the HRA is required to designate an official newspaper at the annual meeting. And, uh, staff is recommending, um, keeping the Bloomington Richfield Sun Current as the official newspaper. And so I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Bloomington Richfield Sun Current as the official newspaper of the HRA, which will remain in effect until the next HRA annual meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Anyone have any alternatives to present? If not, we would be looking for a motion of approval here.
Chair Thorson, Commissioner Lewis, I move to approve the Bloomington Richfield Sun Current as the official newspaper of the HRA until the next HRA annual meeting.
Baloga, sorry.
Motion by Lewis, second by Baloga. Now for the roll call vote. Baloga?
Aye.
Hukim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Again, motion passes unanimously. On to, uh, item 5.7, election of HRA officers. Uh, since we're doing things a little bit differently than they, than we have in the past, if I could just to have, uh, uh, Administrator Coleman just indicate, uh, how this process will work, and then we can open it up.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. Um, so what I would like to do is to conduct the, uh, officer elections. And how I begin is begin with the chairperson, then the vice chairperson, and last the secretary. And so how that would happen is I would like to call for nominations first for each item. So I would call for nominations for the chairperson, allow for nominations to be offered up, and then, um, vote separately on each item. So that would be call for nominations on the chairperson for not, on the nomination of the chairperson, and then establish the, uh, next chairperson, and then move on to the vice chairperson. Um, a motion to accept the position will come at the end of each vote. Are there any questions?
Uh, so if somebody is nominated and they choose not, we're still going to go through the voting process?
If someone, thank you, Chair Thorson. If someone is nominated and they oppose the, or reject the nomination, I will call for that after, um, the nominations are cast.
After the nominations are passed. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff on this process? If not, we can proceed. Oh, uh, was that Commissioner Olson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we've, we've discussed the need, uh, for our commission authority to be transparent, and I'm going to speak transparently now. For starters, I've been in and out of HRA. There's no question in my mind that each commissioner, going back many years, has Bloomington's best interests in their heart, dedicated individuals. Observe that, uh, commissioners and officers have rather automatically been reappointed for over 10 years. I believe organizations benefit from occasional change. And so I'm nominating Vicki to be our chair starting at our next meeting. Vicki is new blood, a long-life resident in Bloomington's east portion, the earliest concentration development, and therefore an area with major needs for HRA attention, meaning aging homes, uh, and aging commercial enterprise. Vicki has extensive and personal experience in Bloom- Bloomington's business community. She has relationships with business owners, property owners, and tenants throughout the city. She's worked with commercial management firms as an employee in her father's 40-year commercial repair and maintenance business. Her CPA career includes two Bloomington firms. Vicki has over 10 years of employment history working with communities who have experienced racial prejudice equity and work in housing. She is ready to help us implementation of recently adopted strategic plans. I believe we've all observed the passion for the mission of HRA and her commitments to connect with residents and businesses, not only in her older neighborhood, but in all of Bloomington. Is there a time limit that I've gone beyond?
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Olson, I don't believe you've gone beyond the time limit. I believe none is set. However, I believe that, uh, Administrator Coleman had a process, uh, to go through in, um, asking for nominations. I don't believe we did that. Uh, I could be wrong, however.
Okay, well, uh, if somebody can jump in, I just have a couple more sentences. Uh, I, I'm placing a nomination, so I thought I was following that. One more important reason I'm nominating Vicki is based on several conversations I've had with her. Vicki is committed, committed, engaging all commissioners and work collaboratively with us, staff, and the city council. And so I ask, uh, commissioners to join me in voting for Vicki.
Uh, back to, uh, Administrator Coleman. Um, if there is a process we were beginning with, please, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Thorson.
I don't know if you're going to officially open this up to nominations, but if that's the case, please proceed.
Thank you. Yes, I will now open up the floor for nominations for the position of HRA Board of Commissioners Chair. I would like to, um, do a roll call for nominations. So if you have a nomination, Myra, will you please call each commissioner's name for a nomination?
I apologize for, uh, um, going out of order here.
It's fine. It's all new for everybody. Um, Commissioner Baloga?
Uh, I nominate, uh, Cheryl Lewis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hukim?
I nominate John Olson.
Commissioner Olson?
Uh, I nominate Vicki Hukim, and I, uh, withdraw my name as a nominee.
Commissioner Lewis?
Um, I'm, will not be naming anyone.
Okay. Commissioner Thorson?
I nominate Cheryl Lewis.
Administrator Coleman?
Thank you, Myra. So I will now ask, out of the nominations that have been cast, for Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Hukim, and Commissioner Olson, does anyone reject the nomination?
Um, okay. Madam Administrator or Chair, whoever I'm supposed to talk to, I, I withdraw my name.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. So, uh, to clarify, we have nominations for Commissioner Hukim and Commissioner Lewis. I will now take vote on Commissioner Hukim. Uh, Myra, will you call the roll call vote for, uh, Commissioner Hukim nomination as HRA Board of Commissioners Chair for 2021, 2022?
Commissioner Baloga, a or nay?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, do, uh, so if you want to vote for another, you pass, is that, uh, the appropriate etiquette?
You vote not, nay. If you want to vote for someone else.
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Hukim?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Nay.
Commissioner Olson?
Uh, we're voting on, uh, the nominee, uh, uh, Hukim, right?
Correct.
Okay, aye.
And Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
And now we'll do the roll call vote for, um, nominations for Commissioner Lewis for Chair of the HRA Commission. Uh, Commissioner Baloga?
Aye.
Commissioner Hukim?
Nay.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
There were three votes for Commissioner Lewis for HRA Chair. There were two votes for Commissioner Hukim for HRA Chair.
Thank you, Myra. Thank you, Commissioners. Based on the vote, um, the majority, Commissioner Cheryl Lewis will be the Chair of the HRA Board of Commissioners for 2021, 2022.
Thank you, thank you.
I will move on to the, I'm sorry, did my internet break? Can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I will move on to the next position, which is Vice, HRA Vice Chair. This will be the same process. So, Myra, will you, uh, the, right now, I will call for nominations for Vice Chair of the HRA Board of Commissioners 2021, 2022. If you have a person that you would like to nominate, a commissioner that you would like to nominate, please provide that name now. Myra, will you please do a roll call vote for nominations for Vice Chair?
Baloga?
I abstain.
Okay. Uh, Hukim?
I didn't, um, I do not have any names.
Lewis?
Um, I would like to nominate, um, John Olson.
And, okay, Ja- um, Olson?
Um, I will nominate myself.
And Thorson?
I nominate Jack Baloga.
Okay, there are two nominations, um, for John Olson and for Jack Baloga as Vice Chair of the HRA.
Thank you, Myra. Uh, out of the two nominations of Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Baloga, uh, does anyone reject the nomination, the, uh, nomination for Vice Chair?
Uh, Administrator Coleman, uh, um, I've, uh, felt it's because of my duality with the city council and the HRA that I do not want to have a leadership position, which would, uh, be a board position. And, uh, as a result, I, I do nomination.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Baloga. I appreciate that. Um, so we will now do a roll call vote for the nomination of Commissioner Olson as Vice Chair of the HRA Board of Commissioners 2021, 2022. Myra, will you please call the vote?
Baloga?
Aye.
Hukim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
There are five votes for Commissioner Olson as Vice Chair for the HRA.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson will be Vice Chair for the HRA Commissioners for 2021, 2022. We will now move on to HRA Secretary position. Uh, we will ask for nominations at this point. So Myra, will you please do a roll call for nominations for Secretary position of the HRA Board of Commissioners 2021, 2022?
Baloga?
Uh, Commissioner Hukim.
Hukim?
I nominate myself.
Lewis?
Commissioner Hukim.
Olson?
Commissioner Hukim.
Thorson?
Commissioner Hukim.
There are five votes for, um, to nominate Commissioner Hukim for the HRA Secretary.
Thank you, Myra. Uh, the nominations for Commissioner Hukim, uh, is there any rejection of the nomination, Commissioner Hukim?
No.
Thank you. So Myra, will you please call the roll call vote for Commissioner Hukim, excuse me, for establishing the HRA Secretary position for 2021, 2022?
Baloga?
Aye.
Hukim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
There are five votes for Vicki Hukim, uh, as Commissioner, Commissioner Hukim, sorry, uh, for HRA Secretary.
Thank you very much. So, uh, the newly elected HRA Commissioner, Commission Officers, excuse me, the HRA Board of Commissioners Officers will preside over the next regularly scheduled HRA meeting, which is March 23rd, 2021. Um, so, uh, we'll just recap that the 2021, 2022 elected, uh, HRA Board of Commissioner Officers are Commissioner Cheryl Lewis as Chair, Commissioner John Olson as Vice Chair, and Commissioner Vicki Hukim as Secretary. Is there any questions or discussion?
I would just say congratulations to all of our new office holders and, um, looking forward to a new year ahead.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Thor, or Chair Thorson, I just want to say, this is the first time the women are outnumbering the men as officers. I started, so.
It's a good, it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
Yeah, taking over, sorry.
Uh, Commissioner, or Chair Thorson?
Go ahead, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I just want to indicate that, uh, I, I nominated, um, Commissioner Hukim, Hukim, uh, to be Chair. And, uh, in no way does that mean that I, uh, will not work very hard and, uh, and applaud your, uh, your selection as Chair, uh, Commissioner, uh, uh, Chair-in-Waiting, uh, Lewis.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Olson. And you'll notice that I what initially nominated you as Vice Chair, so I wasn't too mad. So it's okay. No, I understand. Commissioner Hukim would have done a wonderful job too, so. We have a good board.
Um, Mr.
Commissioner Baloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think it's, uh, goes without saying, uh, that you have, uh, put a real mark of, uh, uh, service and dedication to, uh, our community through your service on this board and the leadership that you provided. And, uh, I want to give you my personal and thanks for, for those residents who aren't here and able to, uh, uh, share in those congratulations for your time and energies. And I know while you will continue on and still be delivering those services, uh, I think it's just, uh, appropriate and wanted to say a few remarks. So, uh, Mark, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Baloga. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. I would like to, um, echo those sentiments. And, um, I, I, I know that you and I go back a long ways. And, uh, so the dedication that I've, I've seen in you that I mentioned in my opening comments, uh, certainly apply there. Um, in terms of, of your service for, I don't know, uh, quite a few years. God, is it like 15 or so?
I've lost count. All right, thank you, everyone. We can move on to item 5.8, uh, HRA Three-Year Strategic Plan and 2001 Annual Plan. Uh, if I, uh, Administrator Coleman, if I understand correctly, we are going to do the swearing in at the end of this meeting? Or will it be the beginning of next? I believe it's the end of this meeting.
It is the end of this meeting, so that the next meeting will start with the newly elected officers.
Thank you. Right, on with the.
Coleman? Coleman, we actually do not swear in, um, officers, only new Commissioners. We don't do the oath of office. But we do, should make a motion to approve the candidates, even though we voted on. I'm wondering if we need a motion to approve them.
I'm happy to, uh, see us, uh, cover that base, and, um, uh, it makes sense, uh, thinking about it, that we do not need to swear people in again. I would, uh, I would make, can the Chair make a motion? I would make a motion to approve the slate of candidates.
Chair Thorson, Commissioner Lewis, second.
All right, we have a motion by myself, Chair Thorson, and a second by Lewis. I will now do the roll call vote. This is to approve the slate of candidates. Uh, Commissioner Baloga.
Aye.
Commissioner Houkim.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Thorson is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we can go on to item 5.8, HRA Three-Year Strategic Plan and 2001 Annual Plan. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, Myra, I'll share my screen if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Let's see, sorry, you all, I'm just finding the screen. There we go. Okay, my screens are switching up on me. One moment, please. Try this one more time. There we go. Thank you all for your patience while I work through that. So this is the HRA 2021-2023 Strategic Plan, uh, Draft and 2021 Annual Plan Draft that I will be seeking approval on. Uh, this is based on the strategic planning sessions that the HRA Board and Staff had, um, facilitated, and the information and discussion, um, that led from that. So I want to start with the city philosophy and goal and values. Uh, so Bloomington is invested in, um, shared contributions to being a great community, embracing our shared values and accomplish our vision and goals by encouraging creativity, innovation, continuous learning, clear communication, and employee empowerment. Uh, we believe in leadership at all levels, and that better decisions are made using constructive and team-based participation, and that we are motivated by meaningful and challenged, challenging work and opportunities for growth, recognition, and success. Uh, below, individual behavioral values, there are a shared set of values that help establish the human side of the organization's work culture, provides a standard for judging interpersonal behavior, and defines how we treat each other and our stakeholders. Operating system values are values that are defined, that define the technical side of the organization's culture, provides a standard for judging the organization's strategies, structures, and systems and processes, and guides our business and administrative operating systems and our technical work processes. The community vision, um, that is for the city of Bloomington is Bloomington as a community of choice, a place people seek out to live, work, conduct business, and recreate. We foster vibrant, safe, and accessible neighborhoods, amenities, and destinations. We work together to ensure everyone feels welcome and engaged in opportunities that foster community life and a sense of belonging. Just a little bit about the HRA and where it sits. The HRA is a part of the Community Development Department, uh, in the city of Bloomington, um, in terms of, uh, where it sits, and so it is governed by the HRA Board of Commissioners. And the HRA has an administration side, which includes the HRA Administrator, but there are two, uh, distinct work group or areas of the HRA, Housing Programs and Policy and Development Programs and Policy. So how is the HRA funded? So the HRA is funded through, um, the Bloomington HRA Tax Levy that does, uh, is a large chunk of our funding for, um, accomplishing our goals and, and meeting our goals. So administration, blight removal, energy efficiency, housing and social services, naturally accord, uh, naturally occurring affordable housing preservation, redevelopment, and rehabilitation. We also use funding from the City of Bloomington Strategic Priorities for neighborhood revitalization and rehabilitation. We receive subsidy funding and our conversion, which is our housing choice vouchers and our project-based vouchers. Uh, we do use, uh, grants and/or loans, uh, when available, so for preservation, redevelopment, and rehabilitation. And then program income, and so the programs in which, um, we have income that we use to, um, fulfill some of our other, um, programs and policies, the development, HRA-owned property, and rehab loans is how we, uh, get program income. So, based on the strategic planning session, have provided a, uh, mission statement that, um, is for review and adoption. The mission statement, as it reads now, is to build and renew the community by providing housing services, promoting renewal and guiding growth with a focus on housing creation and preservation, neighborhood revitalization, and homeownership. Uh, that mission statement is also born out of, um, what is already underway from the amazing work that staff does in the HRA. So in 2020, um, 550 housing choice vouchers, 405 project-based Section 8 vouchers. We have 21 rental homes for future home buyers. Seventy-three neighborhood loans, that's the number of loans that were, uh, done in 2020, which represents $1.5 million of investment, and there are 1,611 residential units in the development pipeline. So based on the strategic planning session, I have to come up with five values. Develop sustainability, which would be promoting energy-efficient, accessible, and healthy homes. Foster innovation, create and or drive forward creative solutions. Increase opportunity to expand access to housing choice and stability. Preserve livability to support redevelopment, rehabilitation, renewal, preservation, and anti-displacement. And strengthen racial equity to disrupt systemic racism in housing through intentional investment and action. These would be the values in which is the lens that all the work is done through the HRA. Um, and when I speak of the HRA, that includes the Board of Commissioners, Administration, Housing Programs and Policy, and Development Programs and Policy. So, I want to get into the strategies. Um, so the first strategy, there are five strategies that are being proposed to guide the work and have, uh, measurable, attainable goals. So the first strategy is, uh, Economic Impact, Education, and Health. And this strategy would be to connect programs, policy, and projects for community stability, success, and wellness. The three, uh, sub-points, which would be the goals to, to, um, work towards, would be advanced housing economic priorities with regional, state, and national policymakers to build strategic partnerships within the economic ecosystem. The economic ecosystem is housing and accommodations, which is rental ownership, shelter, transitional hotels, recreation and environment, which is parks, trails, et cetera. Social and cultural, which is education, healthcare, arts, and infrastructure and business, which is airport, transit, highway, and businesses. So the housing eco, excuse me, the economic ecosystem would be that whatever we do, we also look at how it, uh, we work with those different areas, but how it impacts those different areas in whatever we do in terms of housing. Um, and then number three, engage in collaborative initiatives to expand reach and effectiveness with insights gained. Uh, you'll notice on the bottom of each slide for the strategies, I have also provided how each strategy aligns with the City of Bloomington's strategic priorities as set by City Council. And so the strategy of Economic Impact, Education, and Health aligns with the strategic priorities, community image, engagement and transparency, and inclusion and equity. Strategy number two, engagement and transparency. This would be to increase awareness and community stakeholder and internal and external partner engagement. These sub-points would be, one, to adapt approach to support cultural, demographic, and technological diversity. Two, to advance equity, racial equity, diversity and inclusion through outreach and representation. And three, to explore agile methods of collaboration and communication. Um, in terms of, um, diversity, I just want to be, uh, just break that down a little bit. Is that cultural would be race, ethnicity, background, nationality, geographic location. Um, demographic would be age, economic status, familial status, and gender. So to make sure that we are not, um, that we are not leaving anyone out, but that we are truly thinking of diversity in terms of all, um, areas. Um, the reason that equity is called out separately from racial equity is because we want to be clear that there's an identified need to call out racial equity separately, because inequity is based on a systemic, um, um, racism, which is involving the entire entirety of a system is necessary, but also we don't want to leave out equity. We don't want to just focus on racial equity, but we need to focus on equity as well, but there's a need to call out racial equity. And then agile methods of collaboration will be working together within a specified process to achieve a shared goal. Um, so working together, whether it is interdepartmental or cross-departmental, to achieve, of collaboration, to achieve a specified or shared goal around housing, economic impact, health, education. And so the city strategic priorities that strategy number two aligns with are engagement and transparency, high-quality service delivery, and inclusion and equity. Strategy number three, housing creation, preservation, and rehabilitation. This is to promote education, financing, development, redevelopment, and renewal. And so the subcategories would be enhance offerings and sources for rehabilitation and renewal. Two, integrate resources and partnerships to create and preserve affordable units. Three, support private market development. The strategy, city strategies are community image, environmental sustainability, and focused renewal. Strategy four is housing stabilization. This is to enhance offerings reflective of the whole housing continuum. The housing continuum actually runs from, uh, people experiencing homelessness to emergency shelter, to transitional housing, to community housing, to affordable rental housing, to affordable ownership housing, to market-rate rental, and to market-rate homeownership. So it can enhance offerings reflective of the whole housing continuum. And so the subcategories would be to improve access and opportunities to homeownership. Two, to increase support and service delivery with underserved populations. Three, to maintain rental assistance offerings and expand where feasible. The City of Bloomington's strategy, strategic priorities are focused renewal, high-quality service delivery, and inclusion and equity. The final strategy is strategy number five, operational efficiency. This is to pri- the prioritization of resources and process improvement for future success, uh, of the HRA. And so this is, um, subcategories, one, to create team cohesion supported by training and development. Again, the team is the HRA, which is the Board of Commissioners, the Administration, Housing Policy and Programs, excuse me, Housing Programs and Policy and Development Programs and Policy. That is the team. Um, and there may be subcategories within the team to work for team cohesion, but the team is all of us. Two, to enhance organizational and governance structure for high-quality service delivery. Three, to strengthen financials and operating policies. The City of Bloomington's strategic priorities are community image, engagement and transparency, high-quality service delivery, and inclusion and equity. So, um, that was the draft or the proposal of the five areas of the strategic priorities or the strategies, excuse me, of the HRA for 2021 through 2023, which would set the goals that we would be, um, looking to obtain by 2023. But along the path, we would, um, have an annual work plan, an annual plan that, uh, highlights what we are working towards and how we are work, excuse me, what we are working on and how we are working towards those high-level goals as identified as the strategies. So the next slides will cover specific tactics and our items to be addressed in the 2021 Annual Plan as they align with the HRA strategies. And to recap those strategies, they are economic impact, education, and health, engagement and transparency, housing creation, preservation, and rehabilitation, housing stability, and operational efficiency. And so under strategy one of Economic Impact, Education, and Health, the first strategy would be to advance housing economic priorities with regional, state, and national policymakers. The tactics used would be, uh, city legislative agenda with housing priorities and the Housing Task Force, which, um, does have national and state leadership. In the accountable section, I have added administrator. Um, that is not specific to myself, but administration. But there is not a, I didn't want to confuse anyone, and there isn't anything at the HRA that says HRA Administration. Uh, so when it says, um, administrator, that is the administration of the HRA, which includes the governing body of the HRA Board of Commissioners. So I want to be clear about that, um, because that question was brought to me. And so, uh, one, strategy 1.2, which is build strategic partnerships within the eco, economic ecosystem, would be, um, this year, coordination with special projects and planning collaboration. Uh, special projects and planning are two divisions of the, um, Community Development Department in the City of Bloomington. Um, and there are specific projects and planning, um, specific projects and planning actually with them that can be done and that are underway around, uh, housing development and the economic impacts in education and health. And so that would follow with the administration, administrator, and development programs and policy. And then strategy 1.3, engage in collaborative initiatives to expand reach and effectiveness with insights gained. Um, so the first one is Bloomington Public Schools. It is a housing information series, which would be bringing, uh, housing information to, uh, youth between the ages of, well, 11, 12 to high school to 18, 19. Um, that is collaboration with Bloomington Public Schools, and that would be housing programs and policy. And then, uh, this next tactic would be public health, which is a health equity and renter, uh, health, um, series, which actually is something that they do have a, um, intern for, and there is a, uh, project underway that will engage renters specifically to two, uh, large complexes in Bloomington, so Village Club and South Gate, I believe. Um, and there's, it's an ongoing, um, health equity and renter health assessment that will be happening that is under housing programs and policy, and there will be, um, report back on the process and then the outcomes on how we can implement different things through our programs and policies through that. Strategy number two for engagement and transparency for the annual work plan, uh, to adapt approach to support cultural, demographic, and technological diversity. The first, uh, tactic will be, uh, the annual housing report with ongoing tracking. And so you will hear, um, a presentation on the annual housing report later tonight. Um, and that will be everyone, administrator, housing programs, development programs. Um, 2.2, which is advanced equity, racial equity, diversity, and inclusion through outreach and representation. That will start with one tactic of our Bloomington Housing Action Team, um, which is coordination and expansion, so the B-hat, as it's more commonly known. Coordination with the B-hat on, um, the topics in which they cover and the feedback in which is given, but also expansion on who is on the B-hat to make sure there is representation. That is, um, development programs and policy is where that falls. And then, uh, racial equity business plan goal of the City of Bloomington is to collect, track, and analyze program participation. And that is something we, uh, will be implementing and working towards, um, in our housing programs and. And that is something we will be implementing and working towards in our housing programs and policy. And there is a, there is an outline for how to collect and track and analyze the program participation data through that racial equity business plan goal. And then strategy two point three is explore agile methods of collaboration and communication. And so this is actually working with the Community Outreach and Engagement Department, better known as COED, to establish and develop, to develop and establish a plan of outreach and engagement. There have been a few things that have been brought forward or that have worked on such as landlord and renter engagement groups and coordination, dispersment of materials and information and resources, so developing a plan of coordination with the COED. Strategy number three, housing creation, preservation, rehabilitation. So the first strategy is enhance offerings and sources for rehabilitation and renewal. And so the tactics here will be to maintain and enhance energy-efficient housing programs. That's under housing programs and policy. Single-family and duplex standards review, that is development programs and policy. And this is actually already going to be a coordination with the Planning Division to, to review and, and look at single-family and duplex standards to meet goals. And then serve at least sixty households for rehab loans, and that's housing programs and policies. And that would be for the year to continue those services of enhancing offerings and sources for rehabilitation renewal. Three point two is integrate resources and partnerships to create and preserve affordable units. So first tactic would be to update the commercial redevelopment priorities. There's a need to, to look at that and to make sure that it still aligns with the priorities and which are laid out at the city, but also at the HRA. And so that would be development programs and policy. Three point two point two is housing amendments, tracking, and outreach. So this includes some of the amendments that have gone forward, which is the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. But following and tracking and continuing outreach with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance amendments, and that's the development programs and policy. Three point two point three is our NOAA property review, tracking, and work group participation. So this is everyone in terms of the HRA. It's everyone involvement and pretty much all hands on, on deck, for lack of a better term. We do have, as of December of 2020, I believe it's a little bit over five thousand NOAA units in Bloomington, and that is amongst eighty-eight properties. And there are, almost every week, we are hearing something about the possibility of losing NOAA property. So at this point, we are continuing and stepping up our property review, tracking, and work group participation in preserving NOAA property in the city of Bloomington, which goes towards preservation, but also stabilizing our residents and some of our low-to-moderate income residents at that. And then three point two point four is ongoing projects management. And the reason that's phrased that way is because there's multiple development projects in the pipeline. And so that's ongoing management of those projects, and that is development programs and policy. And then three point three is support private market development, and that tactic is listed as ongoing and not specific, a specific tactic, because it is a matter of how we do our work and how we engage and how we implement the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and, and different policies that we are supporting private market development and not hindering it. And so I just wanted to be clear on that. So strategy four for the annual plan, four point one is improve access and opportunities to homeownership. Well, one thing that we already do and we will continue is to acquire and demolish blighted properties and sell them for redevelopment. That is done through Habitat for Humanity as, as well as Homes Within Reach, which is the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. Just two ways that that is done, but we will continue that under our housing programs and policy. And then four point one point two, this is new, but we would, doing this year is research and pilot a down payment assistance program for Bloomington. And so that would fall under housing programs and policy. Four point two, which is increased support and service delivery with underserved populations. So we'll start, there's the prioritization of thirty percent to fifty percent AMI development. That is something that we definitely focus on through the management and implementation and dispersion of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But there is a need to just further look at that and prioritize that as we look at other projects. So development programs and policy is who's accountable. Four point two point two is hotel conversion study. As we know that there are people experiencing homelessness that are in hotels in Bloomington. And with the impacts of COVID-19 that are yet to be fully realized, we may not need our return to hotels as we move them pre-2020, for lack of a better description, pre-2020. So there is a hotel conversion study that will be underway, and this is also a coordination with planning. And that is just looking at other opportunities and other, what would that look like in converting hotels? And what would they be converted to? So that is development programs and policy. Four point two point three is the temporary pandemic housing. We have a temporary pandemic housing resolution that currently is underway. It was passed earlier this year. And really, it's, it's around the people that are experiencing homelessness and the service providers that are in the hotels in Bloomington, and what is the transition to help them be stable? And what does that look like, whether they're in Bloomington or they move out of Bloomington? And so there is a temporary pandemic housing that we are part of, and that is with the administration and development programs. And then lastly, and four point two point four is support services for seniors. We do currently have SCS, Senior Community Services, where we do home making and chores and help with exterior upkeep. And so we want to continue that and, and look further into supporting services for seniors, and that's under our housing programs and policy. Four point three is maintain rental assistance offerings and expand where feasible. The tactic here is review current programs, processes, and funding allocations while maintaining our current rental assistance. So just want to make sure that we are able to truly serve, truly serve our residents, but also look at ways in case we need to, need to lobby or petition for additional funding or additional support from the federal government or whatnot, but reviewing the current programs, processes, and funding allocations while maintaining our rental assistance offerings. And so that's administration and housing programs and policy. And then strategy number five, which is the last strategy. And it is for our annual plan, five point one, create team cohesion supported by training and development. This is ongoing, this is multiple ways. I think one of the ways this was done was through our strategic planning sessions. Just really creating that team cohesion and having it be at the forefront of the work that we do, but also supporting training and development for all. And how that will help with the work that we're doing and help guide the work we're doing. Five point two, enhance organizational and governance structure for high-quality service delivery. The first tactic is to have a independently conducted high-quality service needs assessment of the HRA. And so that would fall under administration. It will need to be looked at, independent, maybe independent of the HRA, but a part of the city or independent to the city of Bloomington, that has not yet been decided yet. Five point two point two, the HRA Board policies and procedures updating and training. Again, this is something that we did start with the review of the bylaws as well as strategic planning, but it, it is something that is ongoing to make sure that the HRA Board has established the policies and procedures in which it would like to follow as well as following through the HRA as an organization. And then five point three is strengthen financials and operating policies. And so the tactic would be development procedures and process manual. This is with all the work that has been done by staff with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, has really grown the need and grown the, the attention for development in Bloomington and how the HRA is the lead on that. And so there is a need for a development procedures and process manual that is an internal and external-facing document. That can be updated when necessary, but can be reviewed to incorporate all of the goals, strategies, priorities, and the procedures in which we would like to offer these opportunities. And that will be development programs and policy and administration. So that was really long, and it was a lot of information, and I thank you all for bearing with me on that. And I am open to questions, discussion, comments, feedback.
Commissioners, any comments or questions or clarifications you're seeking on these documents? Once again, any questions, comments, clarifications? Commissioner Belog.
Well, I'll start it out. Just some random thoughts in no particular order. One of the things that in one point three, we have the Bloomington Public School leading the housing project, which seems like an anomaly to me because they benefit from the housing programs, of course, but that they're the lead for those housing programs, yet have no mechanism to do anything with housing or influence housing. And it, it just seems like a disconnect to me, both practice-wise. I, I, the Administrator Coleman Nadi, I think I'll let her comment.
Okay, thank you Chair Thorson and Commissioner Beloga. Absolutely, I totally understand that. So strategy one point three, so strategy number one is economic impact, education, and health. So one point three would be engage in collaborative initiatives to expand reach and effectiveness with insights gained. And so the, I'll tell you where this came from. There actually was a community engagement panel that I did around what is the HRA? And I think that is something that a lot of residents didn't know or don't know, which that was interesting to me. And so the panel said, just what is the HRA and what does the HRA do? And so when I participated in the panel, I brought the information of what the HRA is over, what the HRA does. But I also did the panel with two other, or three other. It was the racial equity coordinator for the city of Bloomington, a financial, a financial, what is he called? He works with people around credit building, budgeting, finances. He works for a nonprofit, he's not a financial advisor, but he works for a nonprofit in homeownership, in the path to homeownership. And then there was a Realtor. And so what happened was is that Bloomington Public Schools actually reached out to me, and they said, this information is amazing, and why aren't we providing this information to children beforehand? Before they get out there, they can take this back to their families. And so what this is, is just an engagement piece to allow for, one, people to know what the HRA is and, and what place and space does it hold? But two, for, to hear feedback and to engage with youth, because that is, that's just something we don't have, is to have those youth voices coming back to us around different things that are impacting or mattering to them in the city of Bloomington. But then we also have a bridge to our residents, which are parents, and our bill payers and different things in Bloomington. They may be homeowners, they may be renters, they may be using our current programs, and they may not be. So that is what that tactic is.
Thank you. And then homeownership has been addressed in the pilot and all of that. And that is, the, the city council had a retreat this past weekend and is looking to update its strategic priorities principally for the year 2021. And that is going to be one of the key items. And council will look to the HRA for action and creativity and delivery in that area of programs to facilitate that. And personally, I would like to see a leveraged opportunity similar to what we have with the Housing Trust Fund for you know, that, that leverage is a foreign thing for cities, counties, and states to do. But with scarce resources, it really expands and magnifies the opportunities for programs. If we didn't have the Housing Trust Fund, we would not have what Sherry Schulk was mentioned in her comments. The saving of all of those affordable housing units plus the creation of another hundred and seventy or so more. So and I'm, I'm looking at it in, in a different kind of, not just a one-off sort of a thing, but as we go more toward, or density, we will begin to have condos in our city. Something that we have very little. And we don't have a mechanism to help steward, finance, and promote opportunities. Where that's ninety-eight point eight percent or so built out already. So it is where it can occur and redevelop owners in the commercial zoned areas, not the residential zoned areas to the greatest extent. So I think looking at many opportunity condos is something that will be incumbent on us. Lastly, and, and I know that the hotel conversions are something that seems attractive today, mostly to the ownership of hotels. Duggling and see is exceedingly low. It's, it's all as a result of the pandemic, and that will probably continue for a period of time. I have an acquaintance who does bankruptcy. He's in, he tells principally in bankruptcy, and his calendar is full of hotel properties throughout this metropolitan area, and it's getting fuller. Some of the hotels won't survive, some will have to be repurposed. But our need because of setting in Bloomington with the tourist engine that we have at the Mall of America, frankly, it needs about lots of hotel rooms to be viable. And even in this down market, we are being talked to from a perspective developments for additional hotels. So there will be some transitions, but I want to set the stage that long, long-term, we want hotels to maintain our viability in the hospitality industry. So I think is, is good. A lot of effort that went into it, and I thank you for that, you and the team who put it together. And, and I have too much time with my comments, so let me turn it over to the rest of the group here.
I thank you Commissioner Beloga for your thoughts. Are there any other questions or comments on the, on the two plans? Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chair. There's an awful lot here, both for the annual plan and in the context of the three-year strategies. And, and so I think made And and so I think made comment at our last meeting about the importance of getting a handle around this. And in terms of the accountability issue, I think in my mind, that needs to be fleshed out a little bit in terms of somebody being responsible. And this is so massive in my mind, this whole document and an important effort on, on the board of commissioners' part. But I just, I just want to make an observation that I believe we have some work to do to flush this out. I would simply add also that I appreciate Administrator Coleman doing some of that flushing out, for example, talking about the panel that she was invited to be on. And that illustrating the need for us to get the word out about who we are, what we do, what our place is in the community and that kind of stuff. So look forward to this. But with something this complex, I think we need to have some future board meetings that that kind of dig into that a little bit and give something that's manageable. We talked about having committees maybe involving one or more commissioners. And in my mind, beyond into the community, I'll just indicate that I've, I've had conversation with Alan Arthur, with Ian about the possibility of doing something like that, engaging residents if there's an interest and staff in a place like Village Club is now called, I believe, Blooming Meadows. And so that I just put that out as one illustration. I, I made a commitment when we had that part of our facilitated effort at the last meeting to engage the, the residents and, and the business community. So I'm putting myself out there for that and we'll see where that goes. But it needs to be obviously a coordinated plan that the board comes together with. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Thorson?
Administrator Coleman.
Yes, sorry. So really quick, Commissioner Olson, I do want to point out that Village Club renters are a part of a concerted effort, a committee, so to speak. Not quite a committee, but it participating in surveys, structuring information with the intern, with the public health that is shared with the HRA. And that information is coming back and that was a coordination between the public, public health and the management of Village Club. So they are already involved in something. And I, I bring that up in particular because just when engagement is done and when asked for renters' feedback and input, we want to be careful when we are asking for people to donate their time. And so with this effort, there is grant funds and there are different things available that may be available, such as gas cards or whatnot, for the renters that are participating. And then also there's the Bloomington Housing Action Team. That is also another committee or group that commissioners are more than welcome to be a part of, but also will be looking at focusing and directing some information and feedback around the work of the HRA and focus areas of the HRA. So I just wanted to give you those, just so you know that there's some of those things underway already.
Thank you. I have a question about 5.2 and specifically 5.2.1. And I guess I'm just looking for you to elaborate because I'm sure there's a lot of thought behind those on kind of what the current thinking is about that, examples, need and so forth. Because I, that one I missed a bit.
Thank you Chair Thorson. So 5.2.1 is high quality service needs assessment. And so when I came on board, I was notified that there was so high quality service delivery is a city of Bloomington strategic priority. And there was a high quality service, service assessment done on the previous human services department, I think it was with the city of Bloomington. And from that department, there was a lot of changes. And, and part of that is where the community, community outreach and engagement department came from. And so there is not a city of Bloomington Human Services Department because it repeated some of the services that the county offered. That's not going to happen with the HRA where the HRA is going to go away or anything like that. But the high quality services needs assessment would be an internal and external focus. And so what that is, that's an independent consultant or party that comes in and reviews the work and how the work is divided. How are we engaging with community? How are we communicating with community? How is money being spent? How is the budget being spent? What are the job descriptions? So it's a full-on service assessment of the operations of the HRA and how that operates. I would have to say there would be a review of the HRA board and probably address some of the things that I've heard from commissioners about, you know, being involved and direction and engaging with community. But that is what that assessment is. It's a pretty big thing to happen that touches all of the areas. And then 5.2.2, which is HRA Board Policies and Procedure Updating and Training. That's okay.
That one is clear to me. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Any other comments, questions, concerns, kudos, whatever there might be?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Lewis.
I, I just wanted to make a comment and this is for Administrator Coleman. I think this is a I listened to Commissioner Olson and, and he's right. We have a lot of areas that we're going to need to drill down on and to, to actually get into some of the nitty gritty of some of the things we need to be doing. But I wanted to compliment Administrator Coleman and her staff for putting together a good macro document. It's kind of the difference between macro and micro. You got the macro out there and, and Commissioner Olson is exactly right. We need to start looking at the micro, what we can actually do. And sometimes you need it. It's got to be in black and white. It's easy to have kind of a concept in the back of your head. But I don't know about everybody else, but I oftentimes need to see it. So I, you know, I need to know where I fit in the plan. So I think that this is a really good start. I think it's great that you got everything down on paper. We actually have something we can look at and go from there. So congra, I'm giving my congratulations to Administrator Coleman and the staff for getting this together for us and agreeing with Commissioner Olson that now the real work begins. So. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Hookim, did I see your hand up earlier?
Thank you Chair Thorson. No, I did not. I will just second what Commissioner Lewis said. I think that this is great work. It's so good to see someone bring all these ideas together and bring them into one plan like this. That takes a lot of time and dedication. So I just want to thank you for that. And I look forward to getting, as Commissioner Lewis said, I look forward to getting into the nitty gritty of it and really getting to that micro part of it. So thank you for that time.
Thank you. If there are no more comments, and I'm not seeing any hands raised. We are looking for two motions on this item. Would anybody like to start the process?
Chair Thorson, this is Commissioner Lewis. I will start the ball on this one. I move to approve the HRA 2021-2023 Strategic Plan.
Commissioner Hookim, seconds.
Mark, you're muted again.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lewis, second by Hookim. I will now do the roll call vote. Commissioner Beloga? Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner, did I call Beloga? Commissioner Beloga?
You did. You didn't call Hookim.
Oh, Commissioner Hookim. I knew I missed. I, I, my apologies again.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
And Chair Thorson is aye motion. That motion passes unanimously. Onto the next item we are seeking approval on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Olson moves to approve the HRA 2021 Annual Plan.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
All right, we have a motion. Thank you. We have a motion by Olson, second by Lewis. Again, the roll call vote. Beloga?
Aye.
Hookim?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Again, this second part of the motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Are there any discussion items?
There is.
There is. Thank you Chair Thorson. There is one last item, which is the annual housing report. And Mike Palermo will provide a presentation on the annual housing report for you.
Thank you.
I think I'm on the wrong screen. Thank you, Ms. Chair Coleman. Let's see. See if I can do. There we go. And all right, you should be seeing the report now. So this, we wanted to bring this forward today. This is, and I am for discussion. This is our annual housing report. It's kind of something new that we're going to start doing as a way to kind of track some indicators, some performance measures, some demographic data, and then kind of follow how our, our programs are doing throughout the year, both on our programmatic side and development side. So the report will kind of have, and we'll just kind of quickly run through what is in the report and we'll kind of at another meeting, bring that report back for more official review. But to start, we'll have some, we'll have our strategic priorities and intro to kind of clarify or to kind of communicate to the community what the HRA is all about. And then we'll kind of jump into some of these annual review items. So we'll have a section on demographics. So in that report, we're looking at estimated population in Bloomington right now is about 90,000 and continuing to grow. We're forecasted to go grow to about 95,000 by 2040. And we'll see how development goes. Maybe it goes even higher than that. Our average household, our households will continue to grow. Our average household size has decreased considerably since 1970. It's, it's an interesting comparison to look at those 50 years. In 1970, our average household size was closer to four people per household. And now we're about 2.38 and it's kind of leveled out at that level. So to gain more households, we'll gain more population. In recent years, our BIPOC community has grown. We're at about 28% of our population is Black and Indigenous people of color. And so this is continuing to see growth, especially in the last 10 years or 20 years or so. In 1970, for comparison, that, our BIPOC population was only 1%. So quite a big difference in the last 50 years. Our population right now over 65 is about 19%. This is about 6% points higher than the metro region. So we are a little bit older. Our median age is 41, which is four years older than the metropolitan region. And kind of on the flip side, our youth population is a little bit lower. We're at a 20, about 20% of our population is 18, under 18. And that's 3.5% lower than the metro region. So we're a little bit older and not quite as young. And our median income is about 75,000 and the metro region is about 80,000. So we're pretty, we're pretty close to the, the metro region as a whole. We kind of track that pretty closely. But our poverty level is, is actually lower than the region. So we don't have quite as high median income. Our poverty level is actually lower than the region. The region is about 8% or 8.5%. So we're a little bit lower. However, when we're looking at our median income, not all households are, 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 we have some disparities in our racial diverse households, especially in our Black and African-American households. You can see here, it's 30, 30% lower than the citywide average of 75. Black or African-American households have a median income of only 50,000. That, that's a significant difference. Similar with our Latino households, it's about 60,000, so a little bit higher, but still $15,000 annually lower. So this looks at owner versus renter. So our owner population is also shows some racial disparities. Our white, non-Hispanic population, about 75% are owners and 25% are renters. But you look at the remaining BIPOC population, we have several that are about 50/50, looking at white, Hispanic or American Indian and Alaska natives, Asian population or two or more races, about 50/50. But then you look at our households that identify as some other race. This is only 28% are homeowners. And then Black or African-American, like we said, with that lower median income, only about 13 or only about 14% are homeowners. So that, that's a stark difference, 14% to 75%. This is especially important when we're talking about housing stability and having that steady mortgage versus rent that can continually increase annually. Another item we'll be looking at is housing cost burden. This is when you pay over 30% of your annual income for housing costs. So mortgage or rent and utilities kind of woken in there. And not surprising, if you're making under 20,000, which is pretty low household income, almost 90% both renter and owners are housing cost burden. But as you jump to 20,000 to 35,000 and 35,000 to 50,000 income brackets, you see the homeowner housing cost burden sharply climbs as compared to the renter population. So our owners benefit a little bit better, are able to handle their housing costs a little bit better. To some degree, the people who might have paid off their mortgage over time, might be on a fixed income, you think of our older population. But you can see there's this huge difference between owner and renter populations. And then when you get to about 50,000, it kind of levels out and equals out again. We are a community of choice that's in our vision and value statement. Looking at the types of housing that we provide. We provide right now, this is from our assessing division. We, about 54% of our housing units are single-family homes. About 29% are multifamily. And the remaining are condos, townhomes and co-ops. So you can have some rental and single-family. And obviously condos are owner occupied. So this isn't exactly owner versus renter, but we, we obviously are seeing our growth in the multifamily construction. Whereas single-family, we only get a handful a year. We just, as we discussed earlier in the meeting, we're 99% built out. So we just don't have the room for more single-family. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Brian to kind of go over the housing programs.
Thank you, Mike. So we intend to include a summary of, of the programs and activities that the, the HRA operates and administers. Starting with like the Housing Choice voucher program, we have a contract for 551 vouchers through that program. And also the project-based rent assistance program. This is a mixture of both private and public unit-based Section 8 units. Continue to operate both the Community Development Block Grant Rehab Loan Program and the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program. So you can see the accomplishments there from 2020 to 22 for CDBG and 51 for neighborhood. Last year through our single-family Last year, through our single-family redevelopment program or Bladed Properties Program, we acquired two substandard homes for demolition and resale of those lots. And we did sell one lot of our previously acquired substandard home. We also subsidize, the HRA does Home Energy Squad visits. This is operating in partnership with Center for Energy and Environment. And we did 163 visits last year, even during pandemic. They had to switch it up a little bit and do a variety of in-person and remote, but they're back doing in-person now. Next slide, please, Mike. We do offer home ownership programs, as you're aware. We partner frequently with Habitat for Humanity. Think we've accomplished over 17 homes in Bloomington over the course of the years, working with them. The most recent one was last year, as you know, at Xerxes and Old Shakopee Road. And we also partner with Homes Within Reach. This is the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, or WALT, to provide affordable homeownership opportunities in the city. And we've done, I think we're up to six or seven houses now that we've helped WALT or Homes Within Reach offer to low-income and members of, and home buyers of minority classifications. And the thing to remember about the land trusts and also Habitat, these are oftentimes permanent affordable housing. So for the land trusts, for example, that's a 99-year commitment that that represents. So that's a long-term commitment for affordable housing. And also, as you know, Senior Services, this is the home program offered through, by Senior Community Services. They were here at our last meeting, and they offer the in-home maintenance and chore services, housekeeping, those sorts of things that make sure seniors can be successful in their home as they age. Thanks, Mike.
And actually, I want to jump back real quick. I missed a point I wanted to make on this Housing Choice slide. Looking at the median home value for single-family homes in 2020 was about 286,000. And this is affordable to the about 80% area median income, which is about 290,000. But if you look at someone making 60% area median income, which is, you know, kind of our target, 60 and below, affordable for that at homeowner is about 220,000. So there's a significant difference in there that is something that we'll be continuing to look at. The Met Council has identified in their housing plan, and this, by virtue of being under the Met Council, our comprehensive plan also has adopted these numbers as our target goals for affordable housing creation. You can see our total unit is 842 affordable units, but really, you can see that need is at that 30% area median income or below. So 445 units in that income band. As you'll find, you'll see as we track, we've been doing very well at that 50 to 80%, but that 30% is more difficult. So anticipating that we would have these goals, in 2018, we started to do a study, studies with Dataless and Bay Area Economics to do what's called the Nexus Study. This became the basis for our Opportunity Housing Ordinance. This ordinance, as you all, I'm sure, are very familiar with by now, is incentives to our development standards to provide more affordable housing options, some flexibility to make that more feasible for developers. So it was first adopted in 2019. We did a six-month education period and refined it and amended again later in August 2019. Since it's September 2019, it's been in full effect, and we continue to do outreach and even amended again last night at City Council. It is one of those items that we will continue to review and monitor and tweak as we work with our development community. We also, in December of 2019, passed the Affordable, created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Loan Fund for $15.2 million. And this fund helps promote and create and preserve affordable housing. It's managed by the HRA. And it has, and we've kind of developed these kind of public priorities. So affordable housing, economic development, high-impact areas, high-quality design, catalysts for future investment and return on investment. These are items that will kind of screen how we prioritize the funds. And the funds can be used for development gaps, land and building acquisition, development, demolition and site improvements, new constructions, thought and building improvements. And you can see it's, at some point, we hope to kick off our housing stability fund. Right now, it's not funded, but that would help with rent and services kind of work in tandem with that. But you can see that this will help us meet our goals. And there is a lot of interest in developing in Bloomington. You can see here, this is our latest residential pipeline map. There's a lot of dots on here and a lot of affordable units. A lot of these have significant affordable components to them. And so while not, while not, not all of these projects will come to fruition, we are taking each one of them seriously and working closely in how we can provide resources to make that affordable component, help reach our goal. And so this is, the annual report will look at that, but also look at the units we created. This will be a tracking mechanism for us to kind of show as we make progress on those affordable housing goals. You can see that 30% below in the blue is 2019, and the purple is 2020. And this gray bar is our goal that we hope to meet. You can see we meet our, we already met our 50 to 80% area median income goal. We're getting closer on our 30 to 50%, but we're still lacking in that 30%, which obviously is the most difficult to get. But I will say, we, I believe Brian said, we've got our Met Council Housing Score this, just today even, I believe, and we've got, we got a score of 100. So it shows up that we're making progress and we're doing better than most of the region if we're getting a score of 100. It's comparing us against others. So we'll continue to make progress and track that. Another item that we look at, as we've talked to about a couple times this meeting, is naturally occurring affordable housing. We pull information from CoStar. In December, we had over 5,000 units that were considered NOAA. It's a significant portion, but a lot of our units are right on the edge of NOAA or not. So it can fluctuate quite a bit. And actually, in 2020, we saw that rents on a whole kind of went down. So a lot of units that were on the edge kind of tipped into that NOAA range. But we also know that there's a lot of threat out there for purchasing and converting and displacing a lot of residents that need that naturally occurring affordable housing. So we'll continue to monitor that. And then we'll highlight projects in this report that kind of meet our goals. And I think Village Club was one of those great ones where we looked at not only preserve naturally occurring affordable housing, but to help create new units. So it, that preservation number, that counts towards our goals, because we're now securing that as affordable housing, whereas they were kind of not included in that new Met Council goal before. So this is really a significant boon for us for meeting our goals, making sure that we're not losing, which is kind of, you know, you hit the double whammy when you lose your unit, that we're preserving and we're making sure that that actually stays affordable. So yeah, this was a great example of where we were able to move quickly and create new units, which is great. We're densifying, we're utilizing underutilized land to create those new units, and we're making sure that those units, which had a little bit of deferred maintenance, are, you know, the quality of life for the residents there is increasing as a result of us doing this project. I think that was our last slide. So this is kind of just a brief overview of the things that we'll kind of include in this annual housing report and update it annually. If Erica or Brian would like to add anything?
Just thank you, Mike. And so commissioners, I would ask if you have any questions, thoughts, or feedback around the layout, what this would be, is this the presentation provided to you? But there would be a hard copy that would be, be able to be viewed on our webpage, but also printed out and available, at least right now, at the front desk of the HRA.
Thank you. Great presentation and appreciate it. I assume that while this is an annual report, that there will be updates periodically. Obviously, each project is in effect an update that we work on, but I like this concept of the annual report. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Baloga? Commissioner Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administrator Coleman, is it possible to get an electronic copy of this? I think this has some great information in. And while Bulland Brian did a good job in presenting it, I can't say that I will recall and grasp all the information that once, that we went through that quickly. So a great reference tool, and if I can get it electronically, would greatly aid.
Thank you, Chair Thorson.
I would request that as well.
Thank you, Chair Thorson and Commissioner Baloga. So we want to make sure that the report is, goes through city communications where it looks nice and fancy and presentable. So there will be a hard copy. I needed to have review and discussion and approval of the strategic priorities, mission, vision, values, because that would be the front page, and we could not put the report out unless the board approved those. So that will be done. It should be done by next week. I have to send it to Communications. And as soon as it's done, before we post it on our webpage, I will make sure that all commissioners are emailed an electronic copy to have and to hold and to ask any questions or review back. And yes, with the annual plan, because there are tactics and accountability, there's built-in measurements to report back on how we are doing throughout the year. And then in 2022, we'll have a 2021 Annual Housing Plan. So yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions by commissioners or comments? None? Is there any further business to come before us this evening? Any further business?
No, that's everything. Thank you.
If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn. And at first, I will say, great meeting, great meeting, everyone. Very good. And congratulations to our new office holders for the next, for the coming year. And with that, I'd love for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, Pastor, Pastor Chair. Mr. Chair, if I could just wedge in a comment, thank you for your years of service and for now. And I don't know if you're considering this kind of a breather time now by not taking on an office, but I want to thank you for your ongoing interest in, in working toward the many things that we want to do for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Chair Thorson, I echo Commissioner Olson's comments.
Appreciate it. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? This awesome meeting. The so moved was by who?
Baloga.
Motion by Baloga to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Lewis, second.
Motion by Baloga, second by Lewis. We will now do the roll call vote. Baloga? Hookim? Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Meeting is adjourned. Again, thank you, everyone. See you next meeting. Bye-bye.